Good evening. Welcome to the Winslow Township Board of Education meeting of Wednesday, June 25th, 2025. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates and a notice dated January 9th, 2025. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided in specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier-Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, Bud Dugel Center, Edgewood Acres, Elmtown, and the Winslow Township post offices. Our mission stated, "The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and competent members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world." Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Clark will be absent.
Thank you. Ms. Dredon here. Ms. Glode?
Ms. Glode is on the phone.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Ms. Martin will be absent.
Mr. McManus?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Pitts?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw?
Present.
We have a call.
I pledge allegiance... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McManus, would you please read the 2425 district goals? My pleasure. 2425 district goal, students achieve... Continue to implement the best practices for delivering instructions to students, and this shall include: One, conduct, or I'm sorry, conduct weekly administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning. Two, consistently review student assessment data, advise and redirect teaching. Three, continue to provide supplemental activities, for example, tutoring, enrichment and enrichment periods, to address student deficiencies. Four, benchmark assessment for ninth grade. Math, language, and arts.
Mr. McManus, excuse me. Ms. Glode? Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Can you mute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Two, create a safe and positive learning environment for students and staff. By A, strictly enforce the student, the district's, I'm sorry, strictly enforce the district's student code of conduct. B, focus on upper elementary school students to modify student behavior in the earlier grades. C, reinforce positive behavior in a specific and genuine way. And D, approach discipline with care, respect, and the desire to see the good of all students. Three, increase parent slash caregiver and community engagement in education by: A, provide opportunities for two-way communication with district stakeholders. B, continue communications consortium. C, focus on refining our communications methods and messages to better market our schools. And D, continue with our public relations with the community. Thank you, Mr. McManus. Dr. Potte, do we have any awards or presentations?
Mr. President, we do not have any awards or presentations to see.
Thank you. Ms. Boyle, do we have any correspondence?
No, Mr. President, we have none.
Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes, open and close session from our regular meeting of June 11th, 2025?
Yes. Peterson move for approval of the minutes of June 11th, 2025, regular meeting and closed session.
Go ahead and say it.
Roll call, or any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to our board committee reports. Mr. Thomas, is there any report from the athletic committee?
No, Mr. President, there's no report at this time.
Thank you. Being that Ms. Morton is not here, Ms. Glode is on WebEx.
There is no meeting at this time.
Okay. Correct. There is an education, a committee report in here. In our folders. So I'll read it for Ms. Morton.
Education committee or...
Yeah, right here, education committee. The education committee meeting was called at order on June 3rd, 2025. Attendance for board members administrative for Dr. Carcomo, assistant superintendent and committee liaison members. Discussion topics: 2025-2026 textbook replacements due curriculum district process during the 2025-2026 school year reading programs for grade state rate will be piloted and recommendation for adoption will be presented. Additionally, there will be a new, a review of textbooks reviewed for the high school. However, the adoption may take place during the 25-2026 school year due to the number of textbooks and adoptments that would be needed. These adoptions would need to be, would need to be moved to 2026, 2027. B, New Jersey State Assessment, District Review and Update. Testing completed on the May, results expected last week of August. C, number of anticipated graduating seniors, current enrollment. 281 seniors in February, failing 53 for academics, 14 for attendance. D, summer school. Summer school will only be permitted for students for credit recovery. There will not be a general summer program offered due to low student participation and lack of funding. Students who have been approved for credit recovery must pay for their participation through educator. Impact for Winslow Township School District pertaining to: One, the Murphy administration highlights historical support for schools of fiscal year 2026 budget plan released February 27th, 2025. A, Township School District, unknown, we still have not received any information regarding our federal funds allocations. B, preschool expansion, we are already taking advantage of the preschool expansion opportunities and do not have additional space that would allow us to increase the number of preschool classes in the district. C, high impact tutoring, 187 varsity tutoring, 161 high impact tutoring during the school day, 296 after school. Overall students being served 644. Two, Governor Murphy's Advanced Literacy Education Initiatives, grants and guidance now available to school districts, not explored, this district does not have a grant right. Three, school staff shortages, two gifted and talented, nine elementary, 16 special education, two music, one social studies. Two of three LDTC, one of two occupational therapy, one reading specialist, two security, one secretary. Approximately 46 openings to be filled, some positions are shared. Four, 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program and out of school time resources, not explored, the district does not have a grant writer. Five, awarding over 1.3 million in grants to continued support of computer science programs in New Jersey schools. We have not received any information to that grant that is available or the amount of possible funds available. If the grant is available, the district does not have a grant writer to pursue the grant. Finally, an environment grant, school three update, on May 20th, Ms. Boyd was informed that progress was still working on the engineering design for the rain garden, and once completed the design would be presented to her at a time for installing the garden would be discussed, and hopefully the project would have begun. Additional updates, preschool 2025, 2026 projected preschool enrollment, three-year-olds, 105, A.E., completed applications, four-year-olds, 150, 113 completed applications, kindergarten, 193 registered. Summer camp, maximum capacity 100, currently at 95% capacity, waiting for a few applications to be completed. Priority given to district enrolled students and those currently participating in before and after school program. Summer reading school supply, summer reading and school supply lists are ready and will be posted prior to the end of the school, or end of school. Preschool list may be posted earlier. Pending project, high school library carpet replacement, lowering and replacement of preschool sinks at schools one, two, four, and early childhood education center. Meeting adjourned. Marketing Committee, Mr. McManus?
Yes. Marketing was June 17th celebration was June 21st held at Blue Brooklyn Park. It was attended by board members John Shaw, Michael Clark, Juan McGlod, Elizabeth Peterson, Cheryl Pitts, Winslow Joe, Joe Thomas, and Jerry Mazz. The board members staff on a rotating basis supportive education booth during the course of the day. Arrival or setup was approximately 8:00 a.m., facilities department was ready to go before that. They were in possession of all items requested. These items included but were not limited to the six-foot tables, thousands of padded chairs, table cupboards, table dressing with district logo, as well as the awards that were earned by the students during the current school year. Color showings were also brought detailing many achievements, the students this year in all areas, academics, performing arts, technology, band, floor, athletics. Winslow Joe, Joe Thomas was able to also augment our display with barriers and a red carpet. This was invaluable. It was these accents that provided an excellent setting for the section of the display that centered around the trophy, one of various sports programs. These items provided by Mr. Thomas provided a safe and orderly way for the public to view and to appreciate the student achievements. Ms. Peterson donated two large vinyl banners, one banner marking the historic nature of the Juneteenth celebration. In addition to the banner highlighted, the declared students, the colleges that they were attending, colleges and universities that they were planning to attend, with the number of students planning to attend each of these colleges and universities. These banners will be reusable for the planned upcoming events. Ms. Glode provided ice and water bottles. It probably saved me from heat trip, quite frankly. That's non-board member Jennifer McManus, I think you know who she is, a cookie and cake thing, donated lollipops for free distribution among the attendees. The accomplished goal of this endeavor was to communicate to the town the many great aspects and achievements of this district and the student body as a whole. This was well received by the members of our community that stopped by and engaged. Also note, there were many conversations that held, that were held in the attendees that centered around local alumni, having gone ahead and accomplished or in the middle of accomplishing very many great things. The board also concluded questions how folks could get involved in a number of ways, for example, being able to direct them to the website and roll in personnel. On particular note to the board, the young man who has recently lost both parents, the name escapes me. I remember his name as Mike. Stopped by the booth, but he and his caregiver, who is his grandmother, thanked the board profusely for the assistance rendered to the young man and his family. And of note, various members of the board did take note that the Board of Education was separate from that of the governing body in the, in the area where all the booths were set up. Informal consensus was that the Board for future events should be near the governing body so as to provide seamless access for the members of the community to the majority of the elected officials. Mr. Gallagher assures that the event site did not be completed. The event didn't wind down, and the facilities department were there to help assemble the tents, tables, gather, and gather the Board of Education property. Barriers and the red carpets will return to Mr. Thomas. I'm going to put in here a personal note, thank you to Ms. Pitts, Mr. Thomas, and Ms. Peterson for giving the new key, some nice coaching through the event. So my next scheduled meeting of the committee will be July 12th.
Thanks for that conference.
Thank you.
Who wears a red carpet?
He does.
Questions, Mr. President?
Yes.
I found in our notes here, there were actually...
I thought that there was a oral proof report of that at the last meeting.
Oh, yes, from the last meeting.
Yeah. They ran it.
They just didn't have it. Where is the supply? I think Ms. Pitts actually asked them now.
Which, easily, I'm glad to say, and I've also, for each of the members here, I put in copies of the last meeting minutes from the board committee. Thank you. Policy committee, Ms. Pitts?
I indicated people, policy committee will receive on July night. I guess I need to...
Oh, I skipped over the Ms. Dredon operations.
Yes, we're working on my operation. Ms. Glode? The operations committee meeting met on Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. In attendance were Ms. Dredon, committee chair, Mr. Shaw, the president, and Ms. McManus. Also an attendant, Mr. Shaw, was present. In attendance were Ms. Boyle and Ms. Chito, and the following items were discussed. The high school HVAC upgrade, land architect had sent an email stating that the project will be scheduled to go out to bid in the fall upon approval of the bid spec from the Office of the State Council. The project should be out to bid and awarded this fall, given the successful contractor time of order material. Land has indicated that costs have risen. The 2425 budget, we all know, budgeted capital and other projects from E.I. associates, the H.B.A. system at school five and six. Both of those projects were put out to bid, and the responses were due April 3rd, 2025. We received no big responses for either project. So our intent is to review both those projects at the fall. We are still waiting for the approval from the New Jersey Department of Education for the school five project. Other projects in the 2425 budget, the roof replacement at the administration building, we received notification from the D.O.E. on June 3rd that submissions had deficiencies that needed to be corrected. E.I. will address these items. Grease trap replacements at schools one through four, this project was currently on full due to unbudgeted increases. The partial replacement at the high school, J-Wing roof, partial roof replacement at the high school, J-Wing, we received notification on June 3rd that submission had deficiencies that need to be corrected, and E.I. will address those items. And the construction of a hall bar for the athletics at the high school, to date we have not received the project approval. I believe those also had deficiencies at the submission that E.I. has to address, and we had already approved those additional costs in late 2024. Of the middle school office HVAC replacement, the bid has been posted and was due on June 18th. Four vendors have picked up the bid spec. Since that meeting that bid has come in, we had one successful vendor, and so it's on tonight's agenda to be approved. Now, the 2526 budget, that was approved, we want to thank everybody. Unit contracts, we have reached an agreement with the WTAA, which is the Administration, Administrators Association, and a tentative agreement with the WTEA, the Education Association. That also has been updated and is on the agenda for this evening for approval. Federal funding, we still have not received formal notification attending of federal funding allocation. So it is late, and we're just, I would say we're driving. The meeting adjourned at 5:45 p.m., and the next meeting is typically determined. Ms. Dredon will let us know.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Mr. Thomas, anything from the Economic Development Council or the Municipal Drug Alliance?
No, quite a bit, sir.
There's nothing from the planning board right now. Moving on to the superintendent's report, can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report as the superintendent recommends it for approval, starting on the top page three and moving all the way through the top of page six?
Peterson move for approval of the superintendent's report as recommended for approval. Items A and B, page three through six. Green, second.
Any questions?
Sir. On page four, number 11, exhibit X-A, column one with one. Just for my own identification, it says the food services are required to be continued providing food, both breakfast and lunch during school closures. Do the individual students pick them up or do we look at them?
We have various locations, but I don't see that as number 11.
No.
That is, number 11 is the virtual remote instruction point.
Right.
But I can still answer your question, I'm not sure. Okay?
Sir.
If we have a school closure, we normally have two sites, the high school and school three, available for those individuals in, throughout the community to come up and pick up those lunches or breakfast meals. We have had deliveries for those parents who have not had transportation, but they've made that available to us in advance. So there's minimal deliveries, but we have two sites that are normally available, the high school and school three. Depending on how long that closure exists, we will have an evening time for those parents who couldn't come during the earlier times. At school three, we'd run a light, let's say from four to seven or four to eight for those parents who couldn't come the whole day. Similar to what we've done, what we were doing during COVID.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One more, if I could. On page six, the principal's update, exhibit X-E, column two, something like that, right? There was a report regarding possession of a dangerous weapon, resulted in a two-day suspension. Was that in accordance to state policies and guidelines?
I can't address specifics. Had you given me that, or gave me that question or called me earlier, I would have been able to go into that, talk to the building principal, and get the specifics for you. We normally follow state and school district guidelines. It depends on what the weapon was, was it a toy? I don't know that to be the case. But usually, the high school and most of the principals are pretty consistent with dealing with those type of things. So without knowing specifically, I can't address that directly.
So if I send you a little more about that?
More than likely, I can dig in and get that information for you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report, can I have a motion to approve the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report from the middle of page six to the middle of page 11, as is recommended for approval?
Peterson move for approval of the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report, item A and B, down on page six, three left.
Any question? Oh, no, second, I'm sorry.
Second, great.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to the personnel report, can I have a motion to approve the personnel report as the superintendent recommends it?
Peterson move for approval of the personnel report as recommended by the superintendent. Item A, one through three, down on page 11 to 12. Green, second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to our addendum. They're going to take a second to look at their addendum, so it's a pretty lengthy thing, I don't think.
This room, I inquire of you. Did you do the resolution on the president day, those in the summer?
Yes.
You did, okay. Just wanted to pop in there.
It's in the, we've already done it, but I can take those between board members. Historically, we present them and you write upon them.
Yes.
I just had, I didn't connect with myself, just curious.
Everybody, you ready? Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report as the superintendent recommends it for approval on the top of page one?
Peterson move for approval of the superintendent's report, item A, as indicated by its recommendation.
Green, second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to the board secretary's report. Can I have a motion to approve the board secretary's report as it's recommended for approval by the board secretary going from the middle of page one to the bottom of page seven?
Peterson move for approval of the board secretary's report. Business administrator, board secretary's recommendation of the following items. A, one through twenty-two, down on page one through seven.
Ready, set.
Any questions?
Now, I want to just make a comment on page seven, number twenty-two. I want to applaud that this was the shortest negotiation in the history of business administration. Thank you.
Great job, everybody, that worked on this contract. Roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Glaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to letter B of the business administrator board secretary's report. Can I have a motion for approval of that report as the business administrator board secretary recommends it for approval?
Peterson move for approval of the business administrator board secretary's report as indicated. One, A and B, down on page eight.
Ready, set.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
How about if I call, uh, call, come back. Uh, Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to go back to Ms. Glaw. Are you able to hear me? And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the personnel report on the top of page nine. Can I have a motion to approve the personnel report as the superintendent recommends it for approval from top of page nine to the middle of page eleven?
Peterson move for approval of the personnel report as indicated by the superintendent for approval. A, two through eight, page nine, three left.
Ready, set.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Glaw? Yes. Thank you. Mr. McManus? I don't know, it didn't come through. Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to Open Public Records Act request.
Yes, Mr. President, between the period of June sixth twenty-five and June eighteen twenty-five, we responded to one other request from Justin Wenning from Jump, GetStarJump.com. They were requesting public records detailing financial transactions made by Winslow Township School District, specifically of reports such as a check register, expenditure report of purchase order history, reflecting all transactions from January one, twenty twenty-two to the present date, including but not limited to purchase date, vendor name, description of good services purchased, line item quantity, line item price and amount. If vendor's names are coded, divide the vendor's name with the corresponding code. Those records were compiled and submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Poile. Moving on to informational items.
Yes, Mr. President, according to the community, I have three informational items to consider. As you know, last year, we hired for services or went into agreement, services for Mrs. Perlo, who was our public information officer representing Communications Consortium. That contract expires June thirtieth. Since this was a board initiative, I come back to you to ask whether or not you're interested in continuing that contract with Mrs. Perlo and the Communications Consortium. Now, this, the contract is not with Mrs. Perlo. Mrs. Perlo worked for the Communications Consortium. She was just our representative. So the question is, Board, do you want to continue with those services? We have to let them know because that contract ends June thirty.
That's what she was, the cost of that contract?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Would the renewable that contract be at the same amount?
Yes.
If I can, I'd like to say something on that. And how long, how long has she been with us?
Just one year.
Just one year, twenty thousand. And what, what has she performed for us?
Whenever she was called upon, she would provide us with those services. For example, during the highlight of the football season and the winning of the state championship, she provided not only communication to the community, but she also provided communication to all of the news outlets. She was responsible for all of the television coverage we received, responsible for the television stations coming into schools, interviewing young people, being a part of the pet rallies and things of that sort. Whenever she was called upon, she did respond. So it varies, but again, it depends on, and of course, she worked with Mrs. McCurry and Mr. Aponte in prepping for the new website. So again, her services are available upon school district's requests.
What is your professional opinion?
My opinion, it could go either way. I think, again, if you want to take advantage of her services, she always made a separate delivery. But again, since it was a board initiative, I need to know whether or not the board feel that she provided those services adequately for your support.
I don't feel that she did. Some of that stuff that happened was natural nutrition of what Winslow Township was doing as a whole or as the state championships and stuff. I don't feel that she even came to any of the games. I mean, she, you would have to call her to come in to really engage. She wasn't just proactive, she was more reactive with it. And I don't, and I don't think for, you know, the position and the thing that we needed to get done, I just wish it would have been a little more of an impact from the seat that she set.
Any other board members have any? Then, Mr. McManus, you have a question or comment?
I, I believe I share the same view as Mr. Thomas.
Ms. Redden?
I really accept what Mr. Thomas is thinking of. I agree.
Ms. Pitts?
I agree. Put the comments that in the overall statement, Mr. Thomas, I would agree with that. Now, that, that contract goes from, what, from January, July?
July first.
July first to June thirtieth.
So it started, that's July of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
I agree. Then we have an itemized listing of her services according to the twenty thousand every day. I agree with this.
Your answer, Doc. You got the majority of the board, so that's.
So is no?
No.
The next item is the food pantry. Mr. Mario Parkey and I communicated this week and he has agreed to visit tomorrow the middle school and school six so that he and his personnel can take a look at the spaces and start the planning process. So that'll start tomorrow. Building principals will be there because I told the principals that they're going to play a critical, a very important role in this process. So those visits will be tomorrow. All right? You also have a flyer in your folder about the summer meal program. I provided you that flyer so that in the event you're out in the community and you get any questions about our summer program, we've been doing this for a number of years. That program started already on June twenty, June twenty-third, this past Monday at school Your flyer would indicate that. It will start next Monday, June thirtieth, at the Chitlerhurst Community Center. And the following Monday, July seventh, it will begin at Winslow Township School Number Three. We will be providing breakfast and lunch. The breakfast times is between eight forty-five AM and nine fifteen AM. Lunch is from twelve fifteen to one fifteen. A note for clarification, parents must be present in order for students to be served. They don't want young people just wandering in and out. We want to make sure that those young people have some sort of supervision, plus in the areas where there's a road or traffic, we don't want young people coming back and forth. So we want our young people to know that a parent must be present in order for them to be served. All meals must be eaten on site. That's not only part of the process, but the law states that this program does not do takeout. You know, you, you can't just gather up meals and take them home, that sort of thing. You have to eat the meals.
Okay.
Yes, sir. You have to eat the meals on site. These, this program has been well-received over the years. We believe that it provides a necessary service for Winslow as well as Chitlerhurst. We posted this information, and that's why I provided you with the flyer. So in the event you are encountering community people out there or you want to also help us spread the word, please do so.
So Dr. Parkey, is this still in conjunction with the Department of Acting?
Yes, yes. If there are no further questions, Mr. President, that concludes my informational items for the seat.
Thank you very much, Dr. Parkey. Moving on to old business.
Mr. President, on behalf of the committee established by past President Pitts, naming of the athletic track. This committee was established going around November of twenty twenty-four and being published for input by the community for approximately a hundred and eighty minutes. I'd like to make a motion to name an athletic track after Russell Bates.
Second motion, Peterson.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I do have comments. And I have a couple of questions in regard to the motion. Even though it is important that when people in our community are past, administrators are past students in our community do great things, I do believe that Mr. Bates and Mr. Mitchell were entitled with their flowers being on the hall of fame in our Winslow Township District, but I oppose naming the field after Mr. Bates and Mr. Mitchell. For simple reasons that there are a lot of legends that have gone to Winslow Township School, and then we want to name our school tracks after anyone, I think there should be a clear vetting process, not just a nomination of a degree, but a clear vetting process of the people who are nominated to ensure that their name is honorably put up there for the things that they've not just done in the past, but also what they're currently doing in our presence. And at this moment, like I said, I don't want to take away the flowers from either one of those gentlemen. They've done it, they've got their flowers, their flowers are blossomed, and they have been acknowledged by our school district. But to name our school after two individuals who we have totally vetted to find out exactly what they have done in our presence and what are they doing for our students presently now, or even let's say in the last five or ten years, what have they done for our students at Winslow Township to deserve such a great honor to be, to be permanently put on our Winslow facility in our school? So as a member of the board, I strongly disagree with the particular name of the two individuals, but I do recommend that we can name it as the field of legends or anything we did put out on the table, but we also have another gentleman, the Nico Ronder, was also a nominee, her paper was submitted. And if there's going to be a vote, I think there should be a vote on out of the three or two different names to go on that track field, not just the two that were just mentioned. And that concludes my comment.
Roll call, please. Any other questions? So we have, there's been a motion and a second made. So can we have, can we have a roll call? Roll call on that motion?
The question was called, so we had to vote up.
Yes.
Cease debate and vote down. Then you go back.
Okay, so. Say that again one more time.
So, he, as I heard, he called for the question. So you have to vote with the cease debate or continue. Once that's done, then you go to the original motion.
Okay, so, so we, so I just run, go around the table. So you want to continue the debate of the, right? So yes or no?
Yeah, the debate is the discussion.
Right, right.
Are we listening?
Do I want to continue it?
Are we?
The only comment on that debate is that I believe that we've had it quite a long time to be able to consider this. And a number of folks in the community have expressed, pretty, like what Joe was saying, I mean, I've heard it over and over again, and we even had public comments here at the board, at the board in the past, seeming to support that decision. I don't have anything further to add to that.
So are you yes or no?
Oh, that's a long-winded way. Yes, I'm okay with ending the debate on that.
Ms. Redden?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Glaw?
No.
Ms. Pitts?
I would just want to remind the board of our responsibility to do that and that we certainly are following our own policy, which is policy number seventy-two fifty, which says that in part, that the Winslow Township Board of Education shall have the responsibility of naming all school facilities. Facilities which may be named may include schools, offices, athletic fields, or special purpose rooms. Facility names approved by the Board of Education shall be descriptive and or significant to the schools and the community. The board recognizes the importance of community participation in the facility naming process, and we have followed that to the letter. So therefore, my vote is that we cease discussion.
And Ms. Peterson?
Cease discussion.
Um, yes. Okay, so back to the original motion. All right, roll call, please.
Is there a second to Mr. Thomas's?
Yeah, there was only a second.
Peterson's second.
Thank you.
And Mr. Thomas, yours was to end or cease?
Yes.
Shaw and Mr. Shaw?
So roll call, please, for Mr. Thomas's motion.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Glaw?
No.
Ms., Mr. McManus?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried. The motion has carried.
Any other old business? There's no other old business, moving on to new business? Any new business? Oh, you know, moving back to old business, I forgot one thing for old business, board retreat. It seems that we have a consensus on the board retreat, Dr. Potte, August ninth, that still works for you?
Yes.
Okay, so August ninth, we will have our board retreat, I'm going to let our field service rep know, uh, August ninth, we will be doing our board retreat. So we will move on to, uh, from that, we don't have to hear.
Jack, can you just give us the, you know, the timeframe?
Uh, we'll do it in the morning, like we've been doing it, uh, we've been doing it starting at what, eight o'clock in the morning?
We have breakfast.
Right, and we'll have our breakfast and, uh, okay. And usually end somewhere between twelve and one o'clock in the afternoon, so that way everybody can get on with their Saturday. Is, Dr. Potte, we're okay to have it in the administration building?
Yes.
Okay. And just for the public edification, for purposes, um, we will go back over our district goals for, uh, and make, uh, update or make new district goals for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth, uh, school year, okay?
In addition, Mr. McManus, it's mandatory for us as a board.
Yes.
To have an annual retreat.
Right. The only reason I asked the question is I was, I was, other than the fact that we're required to do it, there would be a purpose to it, and so with that, I would think. Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Now moving back to new business. July, we're supposed to have two meetings. I would like to see if somebody could make a motion to only have one meeting specifically on July ninth and cancel the, or, uh, the, what is it, July twenty-third? Um, meeting?
Peterson move for to host only one board meeting during the month of July, which would be Wednesday, July ninth. Therefore cancelling the Wednesday, July twenty-third.
Second that. Any questions?
Thank you, Dean.
Yes, pass.
Yes.
Roll call please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Galloa?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms.?
Wait, wait.
Okay, Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
One other thing for, um, that we have for new business. And part of this falls back on me because I started this process a little bit late. But I've been going back and forth with our field service rep and Mr. Long. We have to get Dr. Potte's, uh, evaluation done. And after concurring with him, he's got an obligation on the thirtieth of June. So that date is going to be out of question, to have a special meeting with him. So I don't know if Dr. Potte's available on Friday.
That's right.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, that's what I thought. So we, any date after the thirtieth, according to our CUSAC, we would be out of compliance. So we still would need to have this squared away, but we need to find a date to have a, a meeting with Dr. Potte at the, you know. So we need to find a date, uh, whether it be at this point of July ninth meeting or.
July ninth, you'd be, you would not have fulfilled your duties.
Right. So. No, Dr. Potte has a, an obligation that he's, that he's already committed to. And there would be no other dates to clean down on that.
You need to get forty-eight hours notice to the paper. So if we were going to do it Friday night, you'd have to do, have done it probably fifty-two minutes ago. Dr. Potte is entitled to be rice, that requires forty-eight hours advice notice, that just, uh, advance notice that just tells him that we are intending to go into executive session or public session, well, this would be executive session, to go over his evaluation, getting a referral back once he proceeds, and it's an opportunity to review it. So it would be very tough to do anything, uh, the only dates I can see that would, would actually work would be Saturday, Sunday, or Monday. And it doesn't appear as though they're available. Once we go into the new calendar year, it, it's too, it's, you can hold the meeting, you still have not fulfilled the obligation of doing it in the calendar year, which is the requirement by law.
But we bothered it already?
Yes.
Well, we should do it before June thirtieth.
Right.
And that doesn't seem feasible at the moment, Mr. Thomas. What I'm listening to.
So what are we saying? So we do understand that June thirty is mandated, so we've missed that, but we still must still do evaluations. So the question that I would have is, when are we going to do, are we going to make use of that at the July ninth meeting?
Yes.
So Dr. Potte, we'll be right, so that we can do that in executive session?
Yes.
We certainly give Dr. Potte the report that if the evaluation's done, give it, certainly give it to him as soon as possible.
Yes, it will be.
So he has an opportunity to review it.
That will definitely happen. All right. Any other new business? All right, moving on to public comments.
Um, Mrs., well, before I spend ten minutes reading this, is there anybody that signed up? We still have to open and close, but I'll avoid reading the adoptions if I can. Hold on, hold on, we still might have, hold on. I hope this is a blank piece of paper. A blank piece of paper. So you still need to open it up, offer, if anybody comes forward, I'll read the requirements. But you still have to open it up and close it, Mr. Shaw.
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to do it?
Yep.
Peterson move for approval to open public comments.
Second.
Peterson move for approval to close public comments.
Second.
All in favor to open public comments?
Aye.
Aye. And all in favor to close?
And does, hold on, hold on one second. Would you just inquire whether there's anyone that would like?
Oh, is it, okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak? We have. Let's add.
Peterson, open, you made the, and then sacrifice.
Now you can close it.
Peterson, uh, don't we do a voice vote?
And every, yeah.
All aye. Okay, and then we're closed.
Peterson move for approval to close public comments.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to executive session, will there be any questions?
No, sir.
Peterson move for approval to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.